Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Clerk, present.
We're present.
Mr. Matt?
Here.
Mr. Cosby?
Present.
Mr. Robinson?
Present.
Hi, President Lee Gibson.
Okay, can we all rise? Let's lead this way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, everyone. Do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No one has signed up to speak.
All right. Before you give the meeting minutes from May 2022, please review them for any additional solutions or corrections at this time.
Page 21, on Mr. Mayor, it's on page six. It's already listed someplace else correctly, but the middle of it where it's a resolution to authorize purchase of, it's the last resolution, it's $100 and .5 cents. It's correct further down on the last thing on the page that I thought was six.
It's also a rand $5,500. So there.
Okay. It's a truck.
Any changes or additions to the minutes as they are presented to you this evening? With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as amended.
Tom.
Questions or amendments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Cosby?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Clerk? Aye. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Matt?
Mission class, one eye, one saying yes.
All right. So tonight, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. We do have the Zuppo family present. Thank you for coming this evening. Our proclamation this evening is whereas stroke occurs at a rate of 1 at 1,600 to 4,000 live births each year and in 12, in 100,000 children per year. The stroke being the sixth leading cause of death in children. And whereas about 65% of infants and children who have a pediatric stroke will have serious permanent neurological disabilities, including paralysis, seizures, speech, and vision problems, attention, learning, and behavioral difficulties, and may require ongoing physical therapies, surgeries, and whereas the lifelong health concerns and treatments resulting from a pediatric stroke result in heavy financial and emotional toll on the child, family, society, and whereas early diagnosis and commencement treatment of a pediatric stroke greatly improves the chances of recovery and prevention of recurrence. And whereas on May 20th, 2021, Vinny Zuppo was born after a massive stroke before birth and spent 34 days in NICU. And whereas the Zuppo family will celebrate Vinny's first birthday on May 20th, 2022. Therefore, I might greet President of the Village of Hampshire in the state of Illinois to officially proclaim May as Pediatric Stroke Awareness Month and May 20th, 2022 as Vinny the Warrior Zuppo Day. This is in the Village of Hampshire in the state of Illinois. I urge all citizens to join me in supporting the efforts programmed services and the advocacy the Children's Hemiplasia and Stroke Association provides as they strive to enhance public awareness of pediatric stroke.
Very, very nice.
Oh, I don't know. I, 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 I'll say yes, but I'm, you know, I'm vain, so I have this Buddha, so.
Can you get a picture? Absolutely. You could step up and just come up to me.
So, there. Obviously, this is all new, and there's not a lot of stroke neurologists that focus on pediatric stroke, but with my wife's research, she's discovered actually that you're more susceptible to have a stroke before you're the age of one than any other time in your life, actually.
Yeah.
So go figure. All the stroke, you know, all the physicians draw their throats, old timers, but, uh, so thank you again.
Thank you for all your support.
Heather, maybe we can put them in front of the logo.
Yeah, absolutely.
And this is Hila.
Hi, Hila. Cheers. And we'll pray in the proclamation and we'll get it over to you guys.
Thank you so, so much. Trying not to ugly cry. Yeah.
You're in, you have a choice.
Oh, here, are you going to yell?
Oh, no.
Should he just keep dancing?
Yeah.
One, two, three. Vinny, it's your birthday. There you go.
Yeah. They're awesome. So we'll get that framed and sent over to you guys, okay?
Thank you so much. This is me, you know, somebody.
Now, now, you guys can go ahead and run out before the rest. Welcome to.
No, you don't want this greater, you're real here.
It's a birthday cake. Thank you, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Sorry, some of you guys have been here for that one, for this one.
Seriously, thanks again, those were awesome. Hope we're a big family here.
My cardiology, maybe, my, 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 my,
Units available, one of them burning three houses down. So Delaware people didn't take too kind to that, they got irate. So Huntley said, we've got the money, let's build Station Five. So they built Station Five in that backside, so obviously they have two thirds of Lakewood, we have a third. Plus they do all the back well, backside of Delaware. That is a very busy fire station. Very busy, as you can imagine, because it protects the back of Delaware. So they're not always available to come to us. So anybody who thinks that, oh, we're just gonna rely on Huntley, they better not do that. They better rely on us by putting up that second station, because you just can't depend on them being there. Now, when they're available, they're there for us, but you can't promise them. And they will send another unit, but the next station is Station Three, which is on the other side of Delaware. They're very busy too, as you can imagine. And then the next station is the downtown station off of Main Street there, which that's a long haul for them. So that's just a little bit about that. Does that answer your question on this? Uh, Mutulate Auto Aid, we have a very strong Mutulate Auto Aid system. Uh, we're probably stronger now than we've ever been. Uh, we work with Penger Grove, Burlington, Huntley, Zedon, Factory, and Ringo. Um, as you know, there are NFPA standards, when we have a structure fire, we have to have X amount of firefighters on the scene within an X amount of time. Obviously, we can't do that with our own department, so that's why all those departments are coming to us. And we're going to them. That's just the reality of it. There are certain tasks that have to be done in a certain amount of time. And that's why all that manpower and apparatus is coming into a structure fire. And then we have a really good system now, we, we just put this in place like about a year and a half or two years ago. It's all built into our Response CAD systems. So if we have multiple calls in progress, we used to have to get on the radio and specifically request somebody. We don't have to do that anymore. It automatically comes up in the CAD and says Burlington's closest, Penger's closest. It's already built in there, so that helps. But as you can imagine, Penger Grove is rapidly growing too. They are very, very busy as well. And they're gonna be opening up their third station staff here in July, which we'll talk about that here in a minute. I have those numbers in here as well. Um, any questions on, uh, Mutulate or Auto Aid? Um, obviously, as a fire district, you know, we rely, ninety percent of our income is property tax revenue, and the other ten percent is EMS billing, uh, fire recovery billing, and then donations and things like that. Uh, but I can tell you that we are very aggressive of going for free money. We are constantly applying for grants. We do a really good job. Uh, Deputy Chief Larson is gonna do that since he's the deputy. And over the last fifteen years, we brought in about one point two million dollars in grants and funding. So what we've been able to do with that money, we've actually updated our, some of our fire apparatus. We've had to buy new SCBA's, which is our self-contained breathing apparatus. Those actually expire every fifteen years. That's three hundred thousand dollars, just to update those every fifteen years, and we have to do it. There's no asking to do it, you have to do it. Um, and then we bought a lot of other equipment with that one point two million dollars, so that's really helped. Uh, we actually applied for staffing grant as well, it's called Safer Grant. Um, we actually have one pending now, we're asking for three full-time firefighters. But historically, we hope for that almost every year, and we're always denied it, but we get the shot. And then in the last three years, uh, we had a really, really old fleet of apparatus, anywhere between eleven and twenty-five years old. So one of the things that was my goal when I came in as the chief is we need to get this updated, because of the fact we know this development is gonna be here someday, so that's the first step of this. So we've actually, in the last three years, we replaced the, our tanker pumper. Um, we just bought the new engine, which is also a squad, it's multifunctional, it goes to all the accidents and fires. Uh, we just bought a new brush truck, I actually went into service today, that replaced a twenty-four-year-old brush truck. We bought two new staff vehicles, and then we're currently in the process, or very soon, to refurbish our secondary engine. So eighty percent of our fleet will be all updated and ready to go. The only thing we'll have pending in the next three to five years is, um, another ambulance. And then eventually the ladder truck, it's, it's twenty-two years old, so it's getting close. But we're actually looking at another plan on that, I don't wanna get into those details, because, uh, we're just not gonna be able to afford to do that on our own. A new ladder truck's gonna be about two million dollars. So we're, we're looking at other options on that, but other than that, we're really up to date with our apparatus.
Chief, if I can ask, what's a brush truck?
Uh, brush fires, field fires, so it's four-wheel drive, it's a pickup truck. Um, it's very small, so it goes off-road to extinguish those types of fires. We also, we did, we only really go on between ten and fifteen brush fires a year. As you can see, it's a hundred and forty thousand dollar vehicle. Uh, so it doesn't make sense just to do that, so we also made it an EMS first response vehicle. So when we have multiple calls going, we can have EMTs just jump in that. They can go to the ambulance call and render care until a Mutulate ambulance gets there. So that's what we did with that as well.
Right, you, when you open, uh, Station Two, are you gonna basically need to double all this apparatus?
No, so that's, that's the good thing, that's why we were putting this in place, this apparatus replacement plan. Um, so the refurbished engine and our second oldest ambulance and our brush truck will go to Station Two, so we don't have to buy any new apparatus.
Okay.
That's the plan for that.
Great.
And then that'll actually free up some space down here, so we can look at doing some remodeling. Because again, that station was built in sixty-two, we remodeled it in, oh, two thousand and three, but it's very outdated, and to be honest with you, if you've ever been out there, it's very tight. It's, we, there's no space left, so we need to do something with that, so we'll look into those options as well. Any questions on the fleet? Um, so again, perspective, Penger Grove, they have three staff stations, cover fifty square miles, about sixteen thousand people, they ran seventeen hundred fifty calls last year, they have eleven firefighters on per day. Huntley has five staff stations, fifty-five square miles, fifty thousand people, six thousand calls per year, they have twenty-five firefighters on per day. Ringo, three staff stations, uh, twenty thousand people, twenty-two hundred calls a year, they have nine people on per day. Brooklyn Denny has two staff stations, fifty square miles, thirteen hundred calls a year, and they have five firefighters on a day. Fox River has two sta- staff stations, uh, eighteen hundred calls per year, they have eight firefighters on a day. Um, they're actually looking at building their third station now, and then again, we have one station, forty-two square miles, ten thousand people, fourteen hundred fifty calls, and then forty-five firefighters on per day. So we're really one of the last departments in this area that only has one fire station. Um, I said, when you look at forty-two square miles plus the interstate and our call volume and the response times, it's, it's time to move that direction. Um, I'm not gonna go through all the organizational components, again, this goes back to what I said. We've been trying to put all these things in place and get these things done, so we're ready to go if this passes. Um, so you guys can read those on your own. And then here are the magic numbers. Um, the costs, so again, that station's gonna be about four point five million dollars. Um, it's nothing fancy, it's a satellite station, it's ninety-five hundred square feet. It's not administration, it won't have train, anything like that, it's just a very basic fire station. Again, the station's four million, the contents are five, five hundred thousand, that comes up to be four point five. But that's a bond, so it'll be paid off in the twenty years, and then it'll be seventy-five dollars more a year on a three hundred thousand dollar home. So in twenty years, that goes away. And then to staff it, it's about ninety-nine dollars more a year on a three hundred thousand dollar home. So you're looking at a hundred and seventy-four dollars on a three hundred thousand dollar house. It's steep, but I guess the question you have to ask yourself is, how much does people's life worth? And it's just to the point we have to do that. Um, I said, the part-time thing is just absolutely, it's a nightmare right now. So as quickly as we bring some on, we lose a bunch to being hired full-time at other towns to the east. And unfortunately, as I said, they pay more over there, number one. Uh, and number two, once our part-time firefighters get hired full-time over there, you know, you would think they would still be allowed to work with us part-time, but because of that union thing, they're not allowed to do that anymore. The unions say, no, once you're with us, you're not working anywhere part-time. So unfortunately, that's what we've run into, we've lost a lot of, we've lost ten part-timers in the last eighteen months just due to that. Uh, there are a couple of things I do wanna show you here, if you go to the back two charts, so the second to last page. This is what we actually chart all our calls on. So each, um, number represents the response time to that particular call. Um, up in the upper left-hand corner there, it's all broken down, so a blue is a medical, a green is an accident. A green is an accident, a green with a, uh, cross or a plus is a fatal accident. Orange is a hazmat, red, structured fire, and so forth and so on. So if you look up at this quadrant here, this is the area that we're talking about where Station Two's gonna go. It's basically gonna be centrally located right here. So that's gonna cover that entire area, plus the interstate, plus Casadiero, and then zip down to Ketchum, to Allyn, to Twenty, down to the corporate part. So that's the area, so you can see, that's still already a pretty busy area, on top of what we know is coming. So again, uh, we've been tracking this for about fifteen years, and these numbers just continue to climb. And then the very last page, uh, we did our time study to determine why that would be a good location for the station, and you see it's all broken down. So Lakewood, again, at the top, I'm not gonna go through all these, I'm just gonna do a couple of them. Lakewood at the top there, that's a hundred and thirty-five homes. So in the red parentheses, that's what it currently takes us to get to from the station, eight minutes. With the new station, it'll be three forty-five. If you go down to the new school there on Victor, which is about three-quarters of the way down, again, they have about five hundred students and staff in it, currently, it's, uh, projected to be about eight minutes from this station. It'll be about two minutes and forty-five seconds from the new station. So again, those all, the response times are all broken down into that study. Questions on any of that?
Two quick questions for you, Chief. On the bond referendum, and the cost of that, the bond is, if I'm reading this correctly, it's for like four point five million, is that estimated? Is that taken into account the increased cost of materials we're building, construction costs?
That number was actually given to me about three months ago, so, so it should be, but we might have to tweak it a little bit.
And then my other part of that was with the market, the way it is, the, the cost of bonds and financing going up, is that still gonna, are you gonna be able to cover that?
We had, we actually used an outside consultant for all that, and he said yes.
Perfect. The second question I had was, in regards to the Safer Grant you talked about, when you get feedback on whether the grant is approved, does not having a second location play into why they feel you don't qualify for that grant now?
And I say, Aaron, I couldn't give you, uh, an answer why, they just, they deny us, and we don't get feedback on that.
Okay, I didn't know if they looked at it and said, if you have a second, it'd be a better opportunity.
Those are very frustrating, because the hours you put in to fill those out, uh, it's ridiculous and it's crazy, but I'll, I'll be honest with you. Uh, DeKalb just, just got, received the Safer Grant, and so they're getting nine full-timers, more getting platters.
I guess the reason why I asked isn't to supplement what you're asking for, it's more of as Oakstead grows, as those other things grow, your staffing is gonna need to grow, and this gets you to where you need to be now.
Yeah.
But if you look longer term, does that second one then help in those applications? I wasn't sure.
It possibly could, but you know, that stuff that we're already putting into the narrative of that, is that we're rapidly growing, these areas are growth, so we need more firefighters, but fortunately, as I said, we have one pending now, so hopefully we get good news here in the next couple of months. But even then, we have to decide, because we asked for three. So the way that grant, particular grant works, they pay a hundred percent of it for three years, and at the end of that three years, you pick up all costs, so we have to calculate it on our budget. And we can do that in three years, based on our levy, so. Otherwise, we might just take one or two. Any other questions?
If you could clarify, Chief, how many are going to be staffed up at the District Two station then?
So if this, both questions pass, we'll have four firefighters in Station One and three firefighters in Station Two. Station Two will be what we call a jump company, there'll be an engine and an ambulance there. So whatever call comes in, they jump the appropriated apparatus and then respond. Long-term, I believe, five years, and we'll talk about the strategic plan here in a minute. That station will probably have six firefighters, so they'll have three in the ambulance and three in the engine, and then respond to whatever comes in.
Okay. If, if the second referendum doesn't pass, then where are you at then?
We'll build a building and have to go back to referendum.
Okay.
So pass, it's, I don't think there's just no way to staff it. And I, I am not a believer in putting three firefighters in the station and two firefighters up in that station, it's very dangerous, very dangerous.
Not in regards to the presentation, but just in general, how, how can the community that's in favor of this, or board members that are in favor, how can we support this? What would you like to see?
Talk to your neighbors, uh, your friends, your family who live in the district, uh, if you're on social media, that helps. I don't know if you follow our social media, but we've been putting a lot of information out there. Um, this is my third presentation, I'll have one more. Um, so that's what we've been doing, and the answer to the response back to us has been very, very positive. I don't wanna get too excited, because you're still known until the polls open up. But, uh, we've had just a tremendous amount of support, we have people stopping down, picking up signs for their yards. Um, and then people calling us, texting us, emailing us, saying, what can we do? So it's been very positive, but again, we'll have to see what happens the day the polls open up, see what happens. Any other questions? Uh, one thing I did wanna mention, so we finished our strategic plan in March, and this is on our website. Um, you can actually get, uh, Mr. Hedges and Mr. Reed both a copy of this, so you, you can probably see a copy from them. But other than that, you can go to our website and see it, but this actually tells you everything about the fire department that you need to know, including where we're at and where we need to be in five years. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you all for coming tonight. You really, you don't need to stay if you don't want to.
We give everyone an out.
Good night, y'all.
Good night. You don't wanna hear us?
Okay.
Psych.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, we would ask for your consideration of an ordinance authorizing the sale of twenty seventeen thousand cars to Vito Enterprises for ten thousand dollars. Are you having your packets on the gentleman? I'm Mr. Lyons, if you have any questions for him.
And this is the same type of thing in the past, where we just have a surplus of equipment, because we've replaced squad cars, Vito gives us a good price, we don't have to strip graphics off the side of it or mess with it, so we'll rebate. Did I cover it?
That is perfect.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash ten, an ordinance authorizing a sale of certain municipal personal property to Vito Enterprises for ten thousand dollars. Sorry. Questions, comments? Go, go please.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mrs. Bowden.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
All right.
Mr. Paulus.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Wish you peace tonight.
Okay, do we have Mr. Dennison on the line?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Dennison.
Hello, good evening.
Hey, Mr. Hedges, move again.
Um, yes, this afternoon, we had a staff meeting with, uh, Mr. Dennison to review the progress of the, uh, lead service line, uh, survey that you all authorized several months ago. And, uh, so, so Steve is gonna give us a little update on where we are and some things that we need to do to get this ball rolling a little better. Or in the master utility plan, something. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped, I jumped myself on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is a motion to approve a professional services agreement with EEI for comprehensive utility master plan update for a hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and three dollars. Mr. Dennison will address that, I'll just remind you all that this was included in the budget that you all passed out of the budget committee.
So we had a presentation on this already.
Yes, a real, a very condensed presentation. But, um, Steve here is with us here tonight, if you have any questions about it. So do you have a, uh, agenda supplement?
Do you guys, uh, have any other questions about this? We talked about it pretty much in depth.
We're about to be, my. I do have a question on the scope of services.
Absolutely.
So on Attachment B, Exhibit One, Section A, Professional Design and Engineering Services. I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on this, because this is a pretty big price tag to do a full survey of our water system. When I read this, and it talks about the engineer performing design surveys, detailed design of the project, prepared construction drawings, specifications, contracts, when, when this master plan is done, we're not gonna have to repay again to have them go resurvey a specific part of the project that we're going to fix again, correct? All of that will be done and included in this?
Steve, can you address that?
Yeah, I can address that, that's standard contract language for a professional services agreements. There's no, um, specific design component to this that's related to construction activity. Uh, what we are doing as part of this project is doing evaluations of the existing system. And so all of the components are in that. I would, I would refer you to the Attachment B, Exhibit Two, for the more detailed breakdown of exactly what we are gonna be doing as part of that. So sorry for the confusion on that, I know it is, because it's a standard contract language that we have, that talks about designing, construction, and surveying. Uh, that's, that's not really what is in this project. This is, uh, more of data gathering, analysis, evaluation, determining the needs, uh, for the water and sewer systems, providing cost estimates in a game plan for how to implement, uh, things going into the future.
So the answer is, the answer is yes, each project will have to be specifically engineered locally.
There, there are two people that are better legal minds in this room than I, but if this isn't a contract this way that we're going to sign and agree to, and it says, prepared construction drawings, specifications, and contract documents, and prepare a final cost estimate based on final design for an entire system. Also understood that if subsurface explorations, such as boring, soil tests, rock soundings, and the like are required, the engineer will furnish coordination of said explorations without additional charge. All of that is included in here, which would mean we shouldn't be charged again for any of that.
Yes, Steve, that's, I think that language is rather confusing, is that something you really keep in all your contracts, or should that be removed? I mean, we'll make that decision, but what's your opinion?
Are we talking about Section B or Section C?
Section A. Exhibit One, section, or sorry, Attachment B, Scope of Services, Exhibit One, Section A, point number two.
The page.
The page is thirty-two.
Uh, page thirty-two in the package, sorry.
Okay, I got you.
Because that is very specific of what's included, and it makes it seem like we should not be charged again when we go to construct and do the work that is found in the master plan.
I would answer that, that it is not meant to include that. Um, that the specific scope of services in Attachment B, Exhibit Two, does not include anything related to design and construction services. If you would like to clarify, we can remove that, um, and prepare an amended PSA for, uh, for, uh, discussion in the future, if that, if you believe that is necessary to do.
If it is necessary, is, is it certainly possible to make an amendment? Is it concise enough that I think we can amend it?
I leave it to the, the two that are better legal minds than I to wonder, because that's just the one thing so far that I've kinda caught on to. Because that was one of the questions when I go into this, is I love that we're gonna have this all mapped out, but we spend all this money to map it out and to get everything that we're gonna get from it, to then pay them again to resurvey the area that they, we just paid them to survey as a part of the master plan, seems like.
Let me, let me clarify that point, it's not a question of resurveying.
Well, I mean, sorry, to do the construction drawings, to do all of the stuff required to, to fix that area that we've done, like when we did Highland and some of the others and the additional drawings, that's where I just, I really wanna make sure we're clear on that.
I think you're absolutely right, and that's misleading, and we should have caught that, my apologies. So I think rather than be concerned that there might be other language in, in the same contract that might be similarly confusing, let, let's just withdraw for tonight, and we'll bring it back in two weeks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to table this, uh, professional services agreement, uh, so that it'll be on the next agenda.
Uh, I'll make, I'll make that motion to table.
A second.
Any questions, comments? Go, go please.
This daughter.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
This Paulus.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Wish you peace.
And apologies, I'm not trying to arrachy you, I just.
Perfectly fine.
Probably save a lot of money if we leave it just the way it is.
Yeah. Might be a lot of money in litigation too. Uh, since we're probably talking about, uh, another few, couple million dollars of engineering work. Okay, with that, uh, we'll ask Steve to, uh, maybe something a little less controversial, or a little less complicated, is just give us an update, Steve, on our lead service line survey.
Absolutely. All right, is everybody seeing the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, so lead service line surveys, uh, have been ongoing, as far as trying to inventory, um, what the service line material is for over six hundred addresses. The mailers' survey request notices were sent out. Uh, there were two rounds of them that were sent out. And I have some of the details of this here, uh, shown on the screen. Um, and I'll get to the results here shown in the bar chart. Uh, but just some really high-level points about where we're at so far. And it's been two or three months, I wanna say, uh, that I didn't go back and look at the date of the original mailer, but, um, somebody there, Lori or, uh, Jay, can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this goes back uh, probably to February or so, that the first mailer was sent out. And then a second mailer was sent out about six, four, six weeks after that. Um, so six hundred, over six hundred addresses, uh, the survey notices went out too. Uh, there's been about a thirty percent response rate so far. So these, the bar chart here does show the responses, just broken down into service, water line service material. Uh, so it, there's been a hundred and fifty-eight copper, twenty-six galvanized, twenty-one lead, four plastic. Um, that to- totals about two hundred and nine, um, of this over six hundred addresses. So it's about thirty percent, uh, response so far. Um, what we would like to target is, well, frankly, as many as possible. Because the, the real incentive here for the village to get as many responses as possible from the residents is that it reduces staff time of having to go out door-to-door in this, in the area that's been identified that could potentially have lead services, and visually inspect and determine what the service material is. Um, so it's really a big time saver for the staff in order to get as many resident survey responses as possible. So as you can see, with the one hundred and fifty-eight, uh, copper services and the four plastic, there's been over a hundred and sixty services that staff does not have to go out and visually inspect. And, you know, it will take anywhere from one to two hours by the time you coordinate, uh, the inspection with a resident, you go out, do the inspection, you mark down the results, and you furnish the information, uh, along of that. So you can see, you know, you start tabulating things in your head, the amount of staff time, uh, that it, uh, this is gonna save, uh, even with a thirty percent response rate so far. So what the consideration is now is, moving forward, do we press forward and do another mailer or two? And do we further incentivize the mailers? I mentioned here that the first mailer was not incentivized at all, meaning there were no rewards identified for residents who filled the survey out. The second mailer identified a free Hampshire mug to those that completed the survey. Uh, we saw close to a doubling of the response rate with that second mailer. And, you know, now the consideration is, do you put a monetary incentive into a mailer, meaning a credit to, uh, water bills, uh, for folks who, uh, complete the, complete the mailers, to further, uh, increase that response rate? And what we, just as a frame of reference, what we have seen in a couple of communities, there's a little bit of a range. In Batavia, I mentioned this a number of months ago when presenting this material. They were very successful, they offered a ten-dollar credit on water bills, they were able to get over an eighty resp- eighty percent response rate. Uh, Elburn, more recently, um, they put a fifteen-dollar incentive on their bills, but they only got about a fifty percent response rate. So what I would expect is maybe somewhere in between. Uh, what I would hope and anticipate is if there was an incentivization, you might double the current response rate up to close to sixty percent. That is just an estimate, but I think based on the, the pace of the responses so far, that that is as fairly realistic.
Thank you, Steve. Um, with that, staff, it did this afternoon, and it's our intention to offer incentive, and we're putting together a slightly different mailer, more promotional mailer, a postcard, this time not an envelope that might get thrown away or not open. And so we're putting that together and, uh, still considering whether it should be a ten or fifteen dollar instead. But we're talking about potentially a couple hundred of those, so we're not talking about a lot of money. Um, and so we worked with the watering, filling people today, and Lori, and, uh, so that's direction.
With the, um, respectfully, you and I had a conversation.
Yes.
And you, and you left out a part tonight that made a big difference to me. The money that we would spend on the promotional credit is much less than we would spend if we spent, if we offered up staff time the first time, for staff to come to your home and inspect and all that kinda stuff. So by offering promotional credit versus offering staff time right off the bat, we, it's our hope that we can get more people to sign up, because there's a credit on their water bill, and also keep our guys, lack of a term, to keep our guys on their jobs, as opposed to going.
When we do these additional mailers, and like the design of it, and all of the work that goes into it, this is all still covered under the original contract that they're managing.
Actually, the mailers have been, we've been doing that ourselves, that is not.
So what is part of the original contract that still exists with their managing, is it just the data?
Their management, the database, yeah. And then they'll be submitted, doing this middle to IPA, and actually, we're going to know that our materials are already on the IPA, on our website, accessible to IPA, so they set all backend work up, it's being reported.
Got you, but design, mailing, all of that is our staff.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we didn't.
Even the previous two that have.
Right, they gave us some suggestions, but, and honestly, I, I should have put, well, the second mailer, I think, was pretty good. We did the mug, and we offered the mug and all that. First one was pretty informational, and it's kinda, I think it was too long. Um, it was in an envelope, so this one would be a postcard, which is what, uh, Geneva did, uh, they used, sorry.
They gave it to you.
Uh, they use postcards, so I'm, I think it's gonna look a lot like Batavia's postcard, but I don't know, because they were very successful. And we'll probably end up doing two more mailers then.
Thank you.
Mr. Hedges, when, I may have missed it, but when was the first mailer and the second mail, I mean, the dates?
Um, first was in February, and the second was about six weeks later.
Okay.
And I will say that this, this is the first time that we have, uh, revealed publicly that we do have twenty-one, uh, lead service lines in the village. Those homeowners obviously are aware of that, so, because they pulled up the survey, they did it. So it is the first time this has been made public, so just be conscious of that.
Up until this point, it was always understood by this board, previous boards, that we didn't have any lead service lines in the village, so that's what we said for years, we didn't have any, because we didn't know about any.
Right.
But then the legislation changed, we had to go out and find them. And so as of right now, out of, what, six hundred homes? We found twenty-one.
Is, is it possible that people are not responding? I mean, thirty percent still, it's still good, um, because they're afraid they don't wanna know that it's lead?
Well, it's possible, and I had a bigger concern, and one of the reasons that we think Batavia may have been so successful is because um, they, they said if we do find lead on your service line, we will pay to replace it. Uh, and that's, that's potentially a fifteen, twenty thousand dollar per home cost. So they, they're assuming either that they will have the funds, or that there'll be infrastructure money coming down the road later that we pay for it. Uh, we're still not seeing any indication that there'll be any federal money for any infrastructure bill, other than loans for that type of thing. Now, to remind you what Steve went through the first time, we're required to have this survey completed about a year from now, so we have quite a bit of time on our hands. At that point though, now that the board and the, now that the board is officially aware that we do have lead service lines, we are now obligated to replace those service lines, to have them replaced. The homeowner will be obligated on their side, and the village will be obligated on our side of the bonds. So that is obligated, but there, a year from now, we expect that there will be funding mechanisms through the state, we just don't know what that'll be.
And everything we say in the state legislation is, there's no option, you have to.
You have to do it.
It's just like Batavia saying they're going to pay for it. They'd have to cover it anyway. We, what is the?
No, the homeowner, the homeowner is responsible for their side of the B-box. It's their expense to replace their.
Gotcha, okay. So, they're, so that community is saying, we will cover your side of the expense.
Which would take away the fear that they might be pumping $15,000 expense if the survey tells us that it's lead. So, that's.
It's a lot of money, but it, you know, if I look at 30% response rate, so 200 people out of 200 were 21, three times 21 by three, let's say on average, we're at 60, 65, let's call it, homes.
Times $15,000.
Yeah. I mean, so, so we're talking 700,000, 750,000, right? I mean, that's probably really off, but it's somewhere close to there.
Well, that's some, that's one of these things that we, we, at this point, we don't have a choice, right? We have.
I'm just saying, because of that price tag, I think I'm just saying.
No, right. No, I know. So, I'm saying, to your point, is we, we don't have a choice.
So, when we look at a master plan, if we have to say, hey, that may be something we have to include as a potential future cost, we're talking about referendum, or whatever.
Budgets.
Or budgets.
Or bands, or whatever, yeah.
And yet, now, a year from now, we expect to know a lot more about what the state will have, in terms of options for funding, whether we have to go up loans or bonds.
Yeah.
Because there's all this legislation, but no money to back it up. And that was the biggest concern when we were down in Springfield, was the same lead pipe conversation, which is, okay, it's great that you're telling us we have to do this, but then what? And there wasn't a whole lot of answers with that.
Well, I'm just putting myself in a homeowner's shoes. How do I afford it to basically, $30,000 or replace a pipe, because the state will be, I now have to replace it?
Right.
Right. Now, a year from now, we have to spin a plan to replace, and I think we still have two or three years before they all have to. Steve, do you recall how long that we have them to have all replaced?
It depends on how many lead services you have. There's a certain structured replacement rate that you have to do. You'll probably be fairly relaxed on that. It'll be a handful of years for sure. Moving out towards 2030.
Regardless, it was another unbudgeted expense or unfunded mandate at this point.
Right, I'm just saying.
At this point, correct.
For future planning, if we know 750, 800,000, at least we can pay, and we have six years to do that, and chomping that into our budget.
We'll be putting that into either the capital budget or some form of the budget must be. Okay, that's just informational. So, no action. At this point, any other questions, Steve? Thanks a lot, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
At this point, Mr. Mayor, we would have.
I'm very excited about this next one. I'm very, this line, how excited do you think I am?
And I will ask you, Mr. Mayor, and your associates, the board, for consideration of a resolution on raising the village manager to enter into a software, as a service agreement with Tyler Technologies Inc. or the ERP Pro product. This line has a presentation for you, a brief presentation of some of the features in the package. We've had numerous meetings with Tyler, and Lori and I believe that we're ready.
So, I don't know if you had a chance to read my agenda supplement, but this project has been like in the back, or on my plate, if you will, since 2015. You know, you kind of push it down the road, if you don't have the support to do something like this, because I have been through a software implementation, and they don't always go as exactly planned. So, we now feel we have the staff and support in place that we can, we can take this project on. So, it has been quite a process. I evaluated approximately five different governmental software providers, and Tyler Technologies kind of was at the top of my list, not only because of the products that they provide to us as a local government, but also for their civic engagement piece. So, Tyler Technologies, just to give you a little bit of background, is the largest single company that provides software only. So, they only are in governmental software, and they're the largest company to provide it for various government services. So, see what we can pull up here. As far as what they offer, it kind of goes across the board. Attorney Schuster would be familiar with their Courts of Justice program. In fact, Kane County does employ Tyler Technologies for their, for the Circuit Clerk's Office.
Right.
So, it's in wide use around this area. So, not only do they provide for us, they provide for schools, which includes time attendance and grading, but they provide Courts of Justice. The township may employ it for their EAV and all those types of things. So, there are various, there are eight different wings or avenues that Tyler is in. All right, page down. Okay, so this is like my dramatic slide. It provides one solution, so if you notice, I'm going to go back, like blank, and here we go. So, all the things in purple up on the board are additions to what, to the current software that we have. So, right now, we have the very basics. We have general ledger, accounts payable, bank reconciliations, but you'll notice at the bottom of the first column, there's a big S at the end. Right now, we're only able to reconcile two bank accounts in our current system. This will allow us to reconcile all of our bank accounts.
How many bank accounts do we?
Oh, my gosh.
If you had to guess.
Including the special service area bank accounts, which includes like Lakewood's special service area and, and Tuscany Woods, I would guess probably 25.
Perfect.
So, we're going to add.
Twenty-three of which has to be reconciled in the end.
Yeah. So, this is going to add a lot of efficiencies to our work.
Say we add on, or 35 years from now, we'll add.
Absolutely have the capabilities of doing all of them.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll fill them in, okay.
Exactly, yes. And we do our pension accounting within our software, but it's, it's very separate. And this will integrate that as well. So, there's a human resource component to this, which will allow people, so Mr. Pope came to me, Mr. Reed also came to me recently, asking to have their withholding allowances increased. You'll be able to do that online. You know, we can walk you through how to increase your allowances, so that your, you know, your tax bill is less attached time and all those kinds of things.
Employee pay stubs would be online and that kind of stuff as well.
Absolutely, yes. Yep. So, W2s will be available online, you know, for download, and, and everything will be, will be there.
So, there should be a cost-saving for us, because we paid and print those, correct?
So, we will have, you know, some of the same things. We are not registered, well, we are registered, but we can't crack the system, there's no passwords or whatever to actually upload our current W2s to the Social Security Administration. So, we're hoping to be able to resolve all of those issues.
No, what I'm saying, like weekly pay stubs, we pay to print and.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And so that we wouldn't, we would be electronic, like most other organizations, where we wouldn't have to print that.
You'll receive an email and say your pay stub's available for download. Yep. So, we don't currently have an accounts receivable system. We will be getting that. Our work orders that Mary sends work orders, for instance, to the water department, asking them to read a meter, that'll all be integrated into the system as well. And then several of you have reviewed the My Civic app. We'll talk a little bit about that at the end. But there are some great things with a Hampshire branded application that will allow our citizens to report a pothole or some type of weed violation.
Or streetlight.
Absolutely, having a street.
Hopefully, this replaces tagging the mayor on Facebook.
I mean, one of the big selling features of Tyler is, while many things are importable into their system, all of these various systems are their own as well. So, you know, the mobility, the citizens engagement, they're all Tyler products.
I forgot, Steve, you looked like that.
Yeah.
They wrote, and just, there's no way. We usually have pay pros in this town, haven't we?
We're the bricks.
So, right now, one of our biggest challenges is our software support. And Tyler does have a really great support system, not only through phone and chat, but there are, there's a Tyler University where we'll be able to do tutorials before we're actually able to use the software, to learn it as, as we're going along. I just want to share with you that our rollover for fiscal year '22 to '23 didn't really go as planned. On Monday, May 2nd, I sent an email through the ticketing system at our current software provider, and they just resolved our problem on Tuesday of this week. So, I feel confident that we will actually get the support that we need on a timely basis.
But how long have they been sunsetting the current version of MSI?
It, no, it's, it's not being sunsetted. So, that's part of the problem, I think, is they did have a product called Smart Fusion that they tried to roll out probably six to seven years ago, that was a replacement for MSI. And the implementations went so horribly that, and my task was one of the first implementers or attempted implementers, and they abandoned the project. It was, it's been really bad. So, yep. So, Tyler is very future-focused. They provide millions of dollars in updates and reprogramming all throughout every single year. MSI is not so future-focused. So, this is an example of a screen that we look, we look at. So, it's in a window, but this is an old program that is COVAL-based. COVAL has, is a very good program, without a doubt, but it's been around longer than I've been alive. So, that just shows you how old the technology is.
It's 22 years old.
Yes. So, this is what, this is what a 22 window looks like in MSI. And so, Tyler is a little bit more future-focused. So, they have provided this detail to me as far as what their program has looked like over the years. So, everybody that signs on to MSI will get a dashboard with met, you know, metrics that are important to them, how their budget's doing. The chief will be able to dial in and, you know, get his real-time financial information. And so, that's just kind of an example of what it looks like. Kind of looks like MSI is stuck back at 1998 approximately. And then, this is just a listing of the things that are on Tyler's roadmap, if you will, of things that they're looking at getting into their system. So, I don't know what MSI's looks like, what their list looks like, but certainly they have great plans for enhancements to be made to their products. This, this is just a little bit more about My Civics. The city of St. Mary's was demonstrated as an example to the, to.
PR committee.
The PR committee, yes. So, they've seen what this looks like, but it's, it's really a pretty great, and it will be branded with Hampshire's name and.
Most, most of the civic engagement apps is their app, and then you just have your name under their app. So, you download their app, and then you have to log in as, as a user. In this case, it would just be branded Hampshire, which is great.
And then, this is going to be a software-as-a-service situation, if you will. The data will be hosted in the cloud. The, the system will be available 24/7 to any of us. If I forget to turn in my timesheet, I'll be able to do it either from my phone or from my, my laptop at home and, you know, send it off for, to payroll. So, it, I'm just very excited, if you can't tell. I, I think it's going to be great. So, I'm really hoping that, that you'll agree, and we'll be moving into the 20th century.
I'd just like to add two quick things. First of all, the My Civic will probably be the first thing that we roll out. We talked about this at the PR committee back in, I think, about February. I thought we were beginning, the minute you approve this tonight. We do have our hands full a little bit more than I had anticipated at the time with the four public works projects and seven active developments. A few are the things I might not even know about. My morning drive around is now an hour. It used to be about 10 minutes. But anyway, so that, that, it is something that Josh and I are going to be working on real soon. And we would hope to roll that out by July, probably. And we probably won't start the bigger implementations after July. The other thing I'd like to say is that this company sells direct. They don't sell through resellers. Those of you familiar with software, in most cases, you're buying through a reseller, where there's only one in that region. You only have one person you can deal with. In this, in this case, we're dealing directly with employees of Tyler. Scott, the person that's been our, what do you call him, so?
Sales.
Yeah, I think he's a little more than a salesman in my mind, because he's really sharp, and he's been around a long time, and he's really experienced. We spent eight hours in this, six hours in this room at the demonstration on implementation, about, about six weeks ago. So, it's, it's a, it's a really good company, and we have really good access. The woman who took it, the project manager who took us through the implementation modules, I asked that she actually be our, our project manager, because she was so good, really communicated well with the staff. So, we're hoping that we'll have her as well. So, with that, we ask for your approval.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? It's been a long time coming.
I have one more question.
Absolutely.
So, will they come back and train all staff?
So, the implementation will actually be done virtually, and we will begin our training as soon as we actually get the contract signed. We will have access to Tyler University to learn the various modules and the way things go. And then, yes, as needed, we will have, maybe not an onsite trainer, but through dialing into the computers and those types of things. So, yeah.
One question that I might not have. So, we signed, we passed this, you signed the contract tomorrow. Anticipated go-live date would be what?
So, we will have different modules come online at different times.
Sure.
You know, we'll be building the general ledger first. It, it's going to be a process. If I had to estimate, I would say probably maybe 18 months from today, we might be up and running.
Only Tyler.
On everything.
It doesn't surprise.
That's, that's, that's my goal.
I was, I was going to say 24.
It might be.
Tyler throws 18 to 24 months. I think that, you know, based on where we are and the quality of our data, we think we have really good data in our current system. That's the first thing I talked to Lori about, is let's get our data cleaned up before the migration, not afterwards.
Yeah.
And so, we have really good data, which should streamline the process.
Because of Jada Garvey, though.
Yes.
But we, we had, we went through a sort of tentative implementation timeline at that six-hour session, and we'll be doing that again. We'll share that with you before we kick off.
One more question. So, in regards to that, are you planning on redundancy times? So that you're not like just counting on it working? You're going to pull both of them and make sure that it's all.
Yeah, running parallel is not something that most companies do anymore. It's.
I know. I've been on the end of the payroll when that doesn't work.
Yeah. So, we, we, it's not part of the plan to run, to run redundant both systems. Once you make migration, you just have to be fully committed, know, know your daddy's good. I mean, there'll be tests, a lot of testing before we go live. But once you go live.
But you're also doing one module at a time.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that helps too. It's not like some of these business systems, we go, okay, we're going all over. So, if you notice problems starting up, you can always go back to the previous module.
One of the things that makes me feel good about this is Lori's been through this several times. I've been through three times now, and Terry also has a lot of experience with this. So, I think we have a lot of, a lot of experience that we're not going to take anything for granted, but I think we're probably set.
I do feel like we have really good clean data, but there is some cleanup to do in the sense that like, interesting, kind of, one would think across the funds, it would be in the same account number. You know, you have a different fund number, and maybe a different department, but the same bottom-line account number. And that's not the case in our system. So, we will do some mapping of accounts to get them all consistent across the funds.
And we have backups.
To Trusty Futter's comment, though, what is Tyler's track record or, you know, from past clients and, you know?
So, we did migration, and it's like, you know, 98% go right, you know? So.
I can tell you that Scott, in his, I, I believe he's been in this part of Tyler, he's been in software, I think, his entire career, but in this part of Tyler, for, I think he told us eight to 10 years, something, I think it was eight years, actually, that he's only had one failure to fully implement. And that was because of.
The change in personnel.
Change in personnel, and the person that started it just wasn't equipped to do it. So, I think, like Jay said, with.
Excuse me, the change in personnel with the custom of Tyler.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I, I think it's, it's going to happen. It might not be as seamless as everything is always said to be, but realistically, we've been through this, so we know that there will be snags and, and potential delays. And, you know, while my goal's 18 months, if we, I'm not going to, you know, beat myself up. If we don't make it, we're going to just press on and.
Realistically, I don't want anybody on this board to expect that it's going to be less than 24 if they get it. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I bet on the rock, realistically.
Yep.
We just have to understand that everybody on this board needs to understand it's going to take 24 months. If they, if they hit that mark at 18, that would be a lot of celebrating.
Exactly.
But don't get angry if it's month 19. But don't get angry if it's month nineteen and there's still less of them. That's all I'm saying. Because I've we've been I've been through this way too many times and know it's not it's just it's just not gonna go as easy as we're all hoping. And it hasn't and it's no reflection on the current staff or anything. It's just how these things go. So anyway, with that, I would entertain a motion to author our authorize village manager to enter into a uh software as service agreement with Tyler Technologies for the ERP program.
This is uh there's a resolution actually.
Resolution's twenty-two oh six.
Thank you.
Negative. Question comments?
I just have one. Um it's a one twenty-four, six twenty-two, and that's for the migration. Is there a monthly fee that comes with this?
There will be. This this covers the uh the first annual installment that'll you know like cover our annual fee as well as the training, the implementation. Yes. So it it first it covers twelve months worth of our annual fee. And I estimate that our annual fee will be about thirty thousand dollars a year.
Okay. And is that divided up then by month or?
Um actually, I don't know that um if they will bill us by the month. Um you know, we're not wrapped up into a contract per se for, you know, like a certain period of time. Um I'm kind of hoping that when Jay negotiates this, that he gets that annual fee to be the same annual fee for, let's say, the first three years or something like that. Uh because I know they usually put an inflationary escalator on it. Scott. So we'll see.
We give away all our strength.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I have a first and I have a second. Clark?
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Stay.
Soder.
Aye.
Sir Amos.
Aye.
Spal Street.
Aye.
Aye. I also would like to vote.
Mr. Reed.
I can if I want to, and I will say aye.
Okay.
I can.
Five ayes, one abstain, one yes.
I don't think that I don't think that that vote means anything.
It's a ceremony.
You're just so excited to vote for it.
No, I wanted to do this since I got on the board.
No, I get it. Yeah, I'm just giving you an opportunity.
Okay. Thank you very thank you very much. Seriously, I know how much time and effort you guys have all put into this. And thank you in advance because I know how much time and effort is gonna go into this and how many arguments it's going to cause and how much hair pulling out it's going to be. Chief, I'm sorry.
Wow.
This is a hot story.
This is funny.
But it was a good one. He would say I'm gonna talk to HR.
Not yet, but we're gonna have a mountain for it.
For two years.
I did it now for two years ago. Okay, Mr. Edges.
With that, uh Mr. Mayor and Brother Department, we've we've had a spent a lot of time, Josh and I, Laurie teaching us, bringing us up to speed on on the TIF in Hampshire. Uh it's a big project and it's it's also a big hole in the ground that's swallowing our money for the last several years. So um I I asked Josh to do some studying for a lot of information and then jump this presentation together. We also had our first uh TIF board meeting in uh five years because we had everything caught up finally. We had to do all the audits and audit pieces as well. So we had our first community meeting represented by all of the, I think I I spoke about that here for us all in detail. But we're gonna give you that same presentation that was given that night. This will tell you the area of the TIF district, what properties are in it, what's happened to our assessed valuation during that time and kind of where we are now and what we think we need to do.
Josh?
Thank you. So Hampshire's Tax Increment Financing District was established in two thousand and seven. Uh it has a twenty-three-year life, so it will expire in twenty thirty. There is a possibility to extend that uh so far. Current legislation may change that. There's a lot of work to stay on on TIF districts right now. Our TIF district currently has a hundred and sixteen properties. You kind of see this area north and up, so it's mostly along uh Mill, Highs, a little bit of Rin, and then uh on State Street there from the creek basically down to Jackson. Uh the base EAV was about seven point five million dollars, and then I'll show you graph uh later in the presentation that kind of explains what has happened to that EAV over the course of its life. Uh the purpose of the TIF really is to generate money to do projects to improve the area. So there's been two infrastructure projects. Um resurfacing of State Street and some infrastructure replacements on State Casmill and Industrial. Those took place early in the TIF's life. Uh two thousand eight, nine, ten timeframe area mostly. And then there's also been two private projects for businesses that are in the TIF district. Uh the large one being a hundred thousand dollar grant at Copper Barrel for um some interior and facade work. And the idea is that money is put into these um uh public facilities and also these uh private businesses, which then increase their property taxes and makes that area healthier um and get it away from a quote-unquote blighted area.
Just for clarification for the board too, I believe those two grants are outside of the facade program.
Yes, yes, this is a separate.
In addition to any other facade grants that those businesses receive.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
And a quarter of that is not part of the grant.
It's extra.
So this is this is kind of a standard graph that explains how a TIF is supposed to work. So if you can, I don't know if you can see my cursor very well with the lag, but you start with a base EAV and I showed that that was about seven point five million in our case. And then um once the TIF is established, all of the property taxes for all of those properties um above that base EAV then go into the TIF fund to be used for projects and development. Um instead of going to the school district and the township and all the other taxing bodies as the area increases. So throughout the life of the TIF, um for example, the school district, they still get the base taxes that they were receiving when the TIF was established. They just don't get the increment, which is depicted by this red box or red triangle. At the end of the TIF, the idea is all the properties have a higher value and therefore everybody, uh all the taxing bodies, I mean, see the benefit. What has happened in uh Hampshire's Tax Increment Financing District is that it started off pretty strong with a couple of projects at the beginning. It reached a peak of eight point almost eight point seven million dollars, and then the recession took its toll and the TIF really crashed. At its lowest point, it was at uh almost five point nine million dollars. And in twenty twenty-one, it has now crossed back up above the base. And so we are now again receiving um some taxes, property tax funds into the fund. And then the the individual year data is on the side. This is a similar chart that just shows the actual revenue that the TIF fund has increased. Obviously, when the recession hit, every single property didn't equally decrease as much, so there was there were still some funds above the base. Um as of now, we're receiving about seventy-five thousand dollars uh in this last fiscal or in this current fiscal year in uh revenue from property taxes. The important thing Jay mentioned, this is it's kind of in a hole right now, right? So um to do those big infrastructure projects, the TIF took out a bond that then has to be paid back. It didn't have enough money from tax revenue to be paid back, so the village has been supplementing that. And uh you can see here there is currently a negative fund balance of over three hundred thousand dollars in the TIF. If it is still negative at the end of the life of the TIF, uh Laurie might correct me, but the village is just on the hook to cover the balance. Which would again be in twenty thirty or possibly extended thereafter for a few years. Uh the second point here shows that the debt payments are are set to balloon, which I'll show in the next slide right here. So in fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, you can see there are about uh sixty thousand dollars. And then in fiscal year twenty-five, it goes up to almost two hundred thousand dollars. And the idea here is that theoretically later on in the bond, the TIF would have increased in value and would be receiving more money. So it was purposely designed to to balloon that way, but um the TIF just hasn't performed like it was meant to because of the recession.
Is that the only reason? We keep believing in recession.
I mean, yes. I mean, it couldn't be more obvious, I don't think.
There's no other factors that would cause a TIF to not outperform correctly?
When the EAV drops like that, the assessed valuation, that's what
What about what about people protesting their taxes?
Well, that's what drives EAV as well. So I'm sorry. I was not understanding your question properly. Yes, it's the EAV has suffered uh greatly. I would say that the crash, the so-called crash or the drop, yes, that was a recession. Um we have we have we have communicated very closely with the township assessor in the last few months because the properties that we've been missing a lot of money into the facade program as well as the two in this program have not increased in value substantially. In fact, most of the ones with facade grants have not improved increased at all since their facade grants. So we've learned a couple of things that we've met with the assessor um just in the last couple of months. Laurie's been talking about it more recently. And we're trying to emphasize, first of all, that the people that had the two TIF grants signed a contract that said they would not appeal the taxes. And one of them appealed them three years in a row and was successful in getting them reduced because the township assessor did not enforce that provision. Um so that's what we made her aware of. Um we now have a new assessor and uh she understands the program. She's also a member of our community uh committee now, the TIF committee. Um that was a very strategic appointment, a request to be the community member. Um so yes, uh it's the assessor's office plays a key role in this. Uh we've also learned that they don't always add uh a lot of the permits for interior improvements that people do outside of our program or have not been assessed uh to these properties either. Um so it's I I I'm not gonna really second guess the assessor, but I would say the assessor's office played a very key role in assessing these properties. We don't wanna say that we're gonna go out and make ask them to increase all of our downtown business property taxes. We're, you know, in this situation right now coming out of maybe going into a recession and also with everything we have going on around town, but that is a key part of it. So I would say at the crash, that was pretty much the um uh oh eight, but uh recovery could have been better, uh could have been different, let's say, I think, assessor's policy.
So uh I had at that same end, we talked about, maybe we'll talk about this in the Business Development Commission. One of the things that we talked about at the BDC is looking at the facade improvement grant program. We've made some changes to it over the years, but really taking an in-depth look into that program and also adding that same provision that they're not allowed to pro protest their property taxes as in agreement with the facade improvement grant as well. And so it's just another avenue that we're looking at in general, even though, you know, I just think that uh we've kind of got ourselves into a hole here, and so we have opportunities to make, as you said, the recovery a little bit better.
So I just have two more slides here to kind of illustrate this point. Um the first one here is Roy's place that um received side improvement grant. Their EAV has been kind of steadily increasing at a pretty slow rate. Um and it has not uh reached its above its base value from two thousand and seven, so the TIF fund is not receiving any revenue from this property right now. If we look at something like the Stanley East Building that is going online uh in the first year, it's it's a pro rate of taxes because it's not gonna come online necessarily in the first month of the tax year. Um but then moving forward, it'll be over a hundred thousand dollars in revenue just for the TIF fund. That's over and above the base value of the vacant land that was there. So development really matters. Um improvements to these properties that are then put into the uh assessment for that property really matter. Um a couple of more Stanley buildings in the TIF district, if there are any land available, would really solve the problem. Unfortunately, there's not. I don't think there's any more vacant land available, so it'd have to be major redevelopment. And that's that's the last slide here, so I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Just to follow up on that point about how that answers your question, uh Mike, is um I can tell you that the assessor was very um animated about the Stanley Building. In fact, the the original assessment was almost half of what the final assessment was. She increased almost doubled the original assessment uh based on the value of the construction. So she's very aggressive. She was very aggressive when it came to industrial kind of buildings. Um but not so much for the downtown business.
That was gonna be a question I have. When you met with the assessor and you were going over, trying to understand, not for any one in particular business, but we'll just say in the district that EAVs did not rise, is it safe to say that residents' homes' EAVs as a percentage increase was significantly higher than businesses in the TIF district?
I can't answer that specifically, but I would say yes.
It just boggles my mind that the residents whose taxes are paying to improve some of the businesses are now paying more through property tax than what businesses like. I I don't get how you wouldn't have a better value when you improve property.
And and I don't I don't want this to seem like the village board or the village leadership here is wanting people's taxes to increase.
No, that's not my statement.
No, 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 I know. I'm just I wanna put that I I agree with you. I understand completely what you're saying.
I'm just saying about it from a resident versus
Exactly. But and and I I'm agreeing a hundred percent with you. So what I what I'm what I'm saying is is that the village has a problem downtown, right? And so if it gets out that, you know, we're meeting with the tax assessor and saying, hey, why aren't you assessing at a higher rate? This is why it's important. We're all looking at
Right, but I also I also think the facade program has allowed that conversation and the grants have allowed that conversation. Because if we had some buildings still in the disrepair that they have been in, if they didn't get those grants, then EAVs wouldn't Right. We wouldn't be able to make that argument because there were some buildings down here that were in serious disrepair with insulation coming out of the front. And I mean, that doesn't help. Your neighbor's EAV is still up, right? So I just I'm saying that in an in an instance of the work that the beautification committee does, that the BDC does, that facade program, that this board funded again for another year, the grants that have come from TIF. We all kind of work together to make sure that we can continue to hopefully grow values and that the the owners of those commercial properties see their investment, right? And so I think in addition to what you're saying, right, the problem of why we have these conversations, I think it's also a testament to this board, to the beautification committee, to the BDC that they've allowed that kind of upswing. I don't know that we'd have even that upswing if we still had some
To that point exactly. The total investment through the facade program has been five hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. So and the public investment, the village's investment has spent three hundred forty-three thousand three hundred dollars, private investment two hundred three-six hundred dollars. So that's a half a million, over half a million dollars of investment in downtown. It's not had a very significant should it could have had more.
It's certainly all done for the right reasons.
It's had a great impact downtown. It's certainly helped our businesses and it's gonna look great, I think, very strongly. We have some work to do, some educating to do. I felt very good about the meeting we had. I think it was a lot of misunderstanding, miscommunication, um and it just gone on for years and nothing, nothing. You know, there just wasn't a time to dig into these kind of things and do the analysis and see where the real real solutions are. Now we know where the solutions are, it's coming down there.
Good work. Thank you. It helps us all understand.
Are the uh Mr. Ray, you were saying something about conversations happening downstate. Is there a uh a proclivity to the potential change or or elimination of TIF districts in the state of Illinois? Is that that's kind of what I took from the tone when you said that.
There's there's been a couple of bills aimed at TIF districts um making it more, you know, potentially more challenging to establish them or limiting their life from twenty-three years down to a shorter plank of time. Um I think a bill did recently pass that didn't have any kind of drastic effect like that, and the other ones haven't gone too far in the last six months or a year.
They were pushing really hard a few months back to eliminate TIF district extensions, period. Because they're aimed at, have I learned uh Michigan Avenue, all of Michigan Avenue is a TIF district? And uh and then there's municipalities that are using that because there's no part of Michigan Avenue that is lighted. And so that's a miss miss misuse of TIF district. And so because there's municipalities or cities like Chicago that are using the TIF district, there's a lot of legislation trying to remove the ability to establish it.
This is somewhere that I think municipal, what we got, owner municipal league and it all the merit, ours trustees have lobbied really hard. And I think in this case, we fought off those restricted bills. In fact, a bill did pass to extend, I think it was on tonight's, did extend their TIF district. So in a year where they thought they might eliminate extensions, they actually, by legislation, extend. So um it's a it's a big battle. The IMAS were engaged, Truswest is very engaged, and I think a lot of local government people really succeeded in this last session. It's gonna be an ongoing battle.
But you figure we've got until twenty thirty to get this ship righted? Because then the conversation becomes what happens after twenty thirty? Do we have to pay the bond ourselves? Are they gonna allow us to extend it? Does it make sense to extend it? I mean, we can't, we don't, first of all.
Based on the chart that Mr. Ray showed, I think that it looks like we be a positive balance by the end of twenty thirty. It looks like if the revenue continues to come in at a level to which it's coming in this year, it looks like we should be able to dig out of that hole. But I don't know if that if that projection included the balloon payments that will also be coming. So if it's like three hundred fifty plus the hundred eighty, hundred seventy, hundred eighty every year, then that may be a bigger issue.
Yeah, the three hundred thirty thousand hole was just as of current. So, you know, for example, in two years, if the if the revenue is still seventy-five thousand and the bond two years, if the, if the revenue is still 75,000 and the bond payment goes up to 200, it will be digging deeper.
Okay.
So the village several years ago, when it first started, we allowed the TIF to get into a negative position, right, into this negative fund balance. And then as time went on and EAVs, you know, plummeted, and were not growing as expected, the village started, started kicking in. So we've been making a transfer every single year into the TIF fund to not let it get any more negative. It's the best way to put it. And we're in the process of going through a cash flow projection, you know, to include all of this, to see where we're at. But not only do we have to build out of this $360,000 hole, but we also have to be able to make those bond payments. So, yeah.
Home occupations.
Mr. Ray has a brief presentation on this. We've attempted to hit the target with what you all, the discussion we had at the last meeting. And so what we're going to talk about today is sort of the enacting clauses, in other words, the things that we would do. So Josh, you can go through, this is not the actual ordinance, but it's basically the GUS, and then we can wrap ordinance around it. These are the features that you might have.
So at the last meeting, I handed out examples from the Village of Huntley. Basically, Attorney Schuster and I both edited those regulations from the Village of Huntley, and that is what manifested in your package today. So they're very similar. There is one specific provision that, you know, staff took from the board's discussion, which I'm trying to find here as I scroll. But it basically builds on the paragraph about hazardous inventory, and it specifically lists a few examples such as firearms, ammunition, harmful chemicals, and things like that. So anything that could be hazardous would not be allowed as inventory. Other than that, there are specific limitations on, well, I shouldn't say specific, there are general limitations on things like traffic and parking, trying to keep the residential neighborhood character. So there's a mechanism for enforcement if something becomes a problem. But in general, deliveries are allowed. People, you know, if they have an employee, they can park there. It just has to not become like a business, essentially. They're allowed to have a sign, but it has to be a small sign. It can't be a large business sign on the front of their house. That is the idea of these types of regulations. So I'm happy to, to, you know, speak to any specific thing you want to look at. But the next step in this process will be at the public hearing on Monday night with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Of course, anybody from the public can come make comments, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission will review them, make a recommendation to the village board, to let me hear at your next meeting.
On page two, number 10, you have, you listed a wonderful job of listing, listing, and including what not limited to, some items. Dangerous chemicals, does that include, say, fertilizer, or?
So if there was a specific type of, you know, fertilizer that somebody was concerned about, or that we became aware of, you know, probably wouldn't be up to myself to decide whether that's dangerous. We might get an opinion.
Well, I mean, that one just popped in the top of my head, is something like, if you're stockpiling fertilizer in your garage, that's a, that's a huge safety issue.
Well, I think that that's why we left it generic enough, right? Because that's why we have the code enforcement people. So if there was a complaint, they would go in and say, yeah, this is not a good situation.
So they're going to be the ones that determine what's safe and what's not?
Well, they give us recommendations.
So we must, okay.
Yeah, for example, we might ask the fire district for a recommendation on something because they deal with, you know, they have hazmat unit that might say this is a level three, you know, I don't know what codes are, but this is a level three material that shouldn't be in bulk.
As an example, I mean, we all have gasoline, I shouldn't say all, but most people have gasoline and motor oil and that kind of stuff in their garage.
Right.
Technically, 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 it's not dangerous to have in your garage. But if you're stockpiling gallons and gallons of that and extra fertilizer and everything else, somebody might say that's probably not a good situation.
Right. I just want to make sure that's addressed, that that can be resolved quickly.
Yeah.
In here.
I think that, I think that we need to just be careful in that specifically list stuff.
No, I agree, I agree.
Because lawn care companies, we've got people that are doing lawn care, and they're doing it at their house. That's, fertilizer.
Could be a problem.
Could you expand on the vehicle limitations just below that, is section D? And I wasn't able to, you know, take a look at section two, the S6-3. So if you could explain then what limitations there would be?
I believe that's is specifically for semi trucks and trailers, is what that provision, that two dash six dash three is about parking trucks and trailers in residential areas, which is currently not allowed unless it's, you know, making a delivery. So nobody would be able to park semi trucks and trailers, you know, on their residential property. But they could have somebody, you know, drop off a few boxes of inventory with a semi.
And that's an existing, right, that's, that's an existing code.
Delivery semi has to be under a certain weight and a certain length.
Yeah, of course, the semi has to be legal on that road, too.
Right.
So, I mean, these are just specifically listing ordinances that are, are codes that are already under books. Did I not answer your question?
It did. Yeah, I'm just thinking, there's particular residents that always seems to have like, almost looks like a moving truck there. And I thought it was somebody just moved in, but it's there continuously. So that's why, when I thought of that, it might be a business. It's a partial street right by their house, and it's just kind of being used.
A true.
So, I mean, that's, that's why I ask. It's not a semi, but I mean, it's, it would be like a, you know, moving truck that, you know, I would rent in order to, you know, move by also once.
Yeah, but typically, that would have a bit, a higher plate on it than a B plate, and therefore it would be classified as a commercial vehicle.
All right. It is a commercial vehicle.
I think the current code specifically references semi trailers and tractors, as opposed to box trucks or whatever else.
This would be gone. I think it's a box.
It is a D, okay.
Yeah, it's higher than what any company comes that has a lift gate, like a Best Buy or a half electronics. They're going to have a larger commercial vehicle, but it's not a full semi trailer or a tractor that's coming down the road. So I think that in the provision, it does state that it's a certain size that can't exceed for residential.
And it's, it's more so for parking as well.
Which I do have a question, a separate question on that. I'll wait till, since we're on the topic of trailers. Remind me at the end, with state 72 being closed, semis coming down residential streets for deliveries downtown, how that's going to be handled, since that's technically against ordinance?
Yes, and, well, it's not technically against the ordinance.
A full-size semi cannot drive on a residential road.
No, they can, because there's a five-mile way to access that they have for deliveries. That's, that's something we can't say.
Fuel, food, and deliveries, they can be offered.
And they have, they have to be.
They can be in a residential neighborhood, a full-size tractor or trailer.
Yep.
Okay, as long as we know that's okay.
Think about a moving van, for example. They're always in residential areas, that's what they do.
Like, like a big moving truck, a semi truck, a trailer that's moving.
I'm talking about box deliveries and...
Yeah, you can do that.
Car haulers taking the jam.
They have a right and access to their delivery.
Since you, since you referenced 72, during the, during the detour, I dad is, is detouring all trucks, and signs are already up. As of Monday, those trucks have to go all the way to 47 to the east or to walk the road to the west.
Okay, so they are not being detoured or previewed or...
No, 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 no.
Okay. So one of the things we're going to be watching, too, is, is the trucks, you know, still saying I rob.
That's not going to happen.
But in addition, I have passed one. I just wanted to make sure that we're...
Can I give you a further update on the detours and how we're going to?
Yeah, that's what I said. It's kind of a different topic, but when it came up on residential neighborhoods of traffic, if, if we, if we're saying a full-size semi can do a delivery within five miles of that, does that then allow a home-based business to have a full-size semi do a delivery to their home?
Not on a regular basis, because in here, right, it says that they can't contribute to traffic that's not...
Under, under current regulations, yes. You can have a semi deliver a piece of furniture to you. It happens quite often.
Well, yeah.
I don't think companies typically use semis. They typically use a box truck. But it could, it's not illegal.
I just wanted, to your question, make sure that, that someone will look at the notes.
This ordinance would say, due to frequency, it might be, not be allowed. A single, a single trip would not be prohibited. It's not going to be allowed.
Okay.
I have a question on page four, in section D. Two questions for the first one. Occupation involving keeping or sharing, does that mean that no Rover.com dog sitters? So somebody who's just watching a dog for the weekend, does that mean they really can't have that? Or does that mean not, as long as they don't go over the village ordinance number of allowed animals?
Maybe the question is more, what would you like it to be, and we can make sure it's that way.
Well, I think if you're watching a dog for the weekend, that's not your...
That's not a business.
And even if you're, if you're advertising your services on Care.com or Rover.com, I need the other, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
It is.
That's where a lot of people find their dog sitters.
I, I would think that there would be a limit then to the number that you can have as part of your business in residence.
I believe that we follow the King County ordinances and only allow the three dogs. And typically, rovers are one or two. It's, it's not where...
Right.
Daycare for dogs, you're watching one or two dogs.
Correct.
I would say the ordinance currently reads that that would not be legal, so we can change that.
That's what I was concerned about. I want to make sure that those people who do that don't lose that. And then on that number two A, I just wanted to clarify, is this for the daycare, should we add a statement here that says something about in, oh, I just lost my thought, in compliance with DCFS guidelines?
So there's a broader section in this that says you shall comply with all applicable, I mean, yeah, so section, section C11, every home occupation shop will comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations. So, yeah, that would, that would cover it as well.
That would cover it. Okay, good.
Again, there's no action required by the board tonight. We're just getting your feedback, so then we can raise the ordinance and take it to the line commission on Monday.
Just for my clarification on the, there's a section in there that talks about, I think it's part C number two, where it talks about not limiting the number of people on premises for either professional or advisory services. If I'm a home-based chiropractor, is that considered a personal service, that I would be allowed to have a patient in my home if I have a room that is dedicated for those treatments?
Page fifty, sorry, that was C whatever.
It's there. I just wanted to make sure I understand the clarification of personal service.
Are you, are you a G?
Uh, sorry.
G two C?
It is right below the daycare part of it.
Section, it could be seven.
It is G two C. Attendance of up to first, two person, two client, up to two clients at any one time may be allowed for personal or advisory services. Do, would, would a personal service include like a chiropractor that has a service out of their home, a masseuse or a masseuse or something like that?
A hair cutter.
Is, or hair, or, you know, a stylist, that's covered as a personal service?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure my understanding was correct. Thank you.
If I could just jump on to the, you know, if someone comes in with people, they're one is a client, they've got additional people that came with them. Does that cause a problem?
I think it's two clients.
So I heard three people with me? Okay.
And your kids are with you, you're not going to limit, because you have three kids, so you can't.
Okay.
I would...
Okay.
I think they don't want to win the crown with seven people.
Okay.
Yeah, and having, having seven vehicles parked out front, and away, there are some people in the house, right? And again, this is, you know, largely going to be complaint based, because we're not going to know what's happening inside people's homes until somebody complains that there's constantly 10 cars parked out front.
I'm good.
Okay. We'll take a shot at it. Hopefully we'll hit it. We'll come back again. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lunch report time. Miss line, you hang up.
Actually, I think what we just do is see if you have any questions at this point. Answers it on time regularly. So, but if you have any questions?
I have one. Well, one and then a statement based on your answer this morning. I see that these are the months ending April 30. I know this is not an official audit, but this would be the end of the fiscal year, correct?
So this is the end of the 12-month period. We actually process a 13-month period where we do all of our accrual adjustments to make this on a truly modified cash basis and ready for the audit. So this is, bank accounts are reconciled, you've got all the cash in and the expenses out.
This report.
In this report. So this is a very, very important period.
Yeah, this is going to be hard for you and I to say this is the one we really value with here. We're going to wait till...
Okay, because I was about to congratulate you all for ending on a year-to-date surplus of 1.5 million. But I'm going to hold that now and see what the numbers are.
I, I was so anxious for this, too, and then I realized the same thing.
Because I, I gotta say, if it's anywhere close to that, bravo on fiscal year.
You want to speculate a little bit?
No, no speculating. Not going to.
I don't, it's seven thousand. We don't expect, we do expect, we do expect to have a surplus.
Yeah.
Let's be a mark specialist. I think we did better in revenue, but we also have public expenses real bad. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one quick question on page 59, and for the pension trust fund at the very bottom. I just wanted to see about the expenditures, because year-to-date budget was 74,928, and actual was 164.
So we had a couple of officers that transferred their funds or withdrew. So we had one officer that actually resigned and withdrew his funds, which was unusual, but allowable. And so that's one piece. And then we had an officer that transferred, he left the Hampshire Police Force, went to another force, and transferred his pension funds, which is allowable, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, it's much more than, you know, we didn't really plan any of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Approximately, the withdrawal was over $70,000. So that's a big piece of that number that's looking way out there.
Revenue was really good, you know, so we kind of held circles there, too. But we actually had a transfer in, which resulted in that. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Personnel is a real challenge for us these days. A lot of people, you heard Trevor talking about part-time people. We lost all the police employees on the near eight weeks to a job for $7 an hour more. So I'm really concerned about whether we're going to lose more people. We lost one police officer. We're going to lose another person. It's just, just musical chairs out there right now. There's so many opportunities. And those of us who are, Trevor mentioned you, that all the villages to the east are paying $20,000 more. I think he said for fires, right? We've, we've done a lot to catch up. We've done a lot, not just payroll, but also benefits, trying to be strategic in the things that we do, not just police dollar importance. Personnel is a real challenge. We haven't been hit hard yet, but we're not, we're not, definitely not immune. So we're going to be watching that right here. Any questions about this report or engineering report?
If that wasn't uplifting enough, let's look at the accounts paid.
Let's talk about, let's talk about the accounts payable to employees.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I would second that.
For a second, questions, comments about the big, high-dollar purchases. Ms. Clerk, you're up.
Ms. Futter, hi. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Fellers, too.
Hi.
Would you pass by?
And now for the small number.
Same number.
Holy moly. Okay, so I have a first. Questions, comments?
Yes.
Yes.
I think I know the answer, but I ask anyway. King County Excavement for 214, 215,000, is that north saltwater?
That is, yes. You approved that at the last meeting, and, yep.
I thought I knew the answer, okay.
You approved that.
We did.
I did.
It's my solo.
On solo. It's a big block.
A question on page eighty.
Page eighty.
Can you remind me, please, about that MBM demo unit for $100,000?
No, actually, that is the Dodge Ram 5500.
That's a truck?
It is a truck.
Okay, I didn't know MBM demo unit. Now, I was like...
It's a Ram 5500, is 2021 with low miles on the MB.
Yeah, that I understand. I didn't know how that translates to MBM demo.
It's our payable module, and that software misses it.
Definitely not human error. I'm not sure exactly what we're looking at to get that description.
Any other questions?
A Westside tractor. A Westside tractor. See a Westside tractor?
Oh, it's a Westside tractor.
No, you don't see that yet, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do.
It's there. Down about a hundred and sixty-three dollars, I see it, yeah.
One hundred dollars. And no change.
That was a pretty.
I just said trustee coat isn't here to vote on this.
We can take it.
Yeah.
Oh, no. Okay, so I, oh, yeah.
Just one quick question for the trees unlimited on page fifteen. I just wanted to see, because it was a replacement tree and, and for some reason I thought it was somewhere near, well, that was a restoration due to the water main. And I wasn't sure where that was, and if it was anywhere near downtown, I thought we really should wait till it's all done before we replace trees, so I just was trying to figure where that was at. So, um, I, I would have to pull the box, but I don't believe that that is, has anything to do with the water main connection piece yet. No, this was, this was restoration to somebody's property for a water main break. Okay, all right, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna be replacing trees when we're selling it all.
No, no, it's not that at all.
Okay, that's all.
I guarantee it's not that, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for a second, any other questions and or comments? Little public, please.
Ms. Palestine.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Foder.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Would you pass by?
Fantastic. Mr. Kelly, what can you tell us about the BDC or would you like to defer?
Uh, no, I was kind of tempted.
Would I have to pay you back because you told me I couldn't vote?
I, I'm just one for the rules, to be honest. Uh, and I will probably ask you and Mr. Hedges for input in this as well. Thank you both for attending, Mr. Hedges for always being there and, and Village President Reed for also. The BDC had a really good meeting. There was a lot of conversation around, first, we sadly said goodbye to Ms. Suzie Copez, who attended her final meeting, and I was not here to enjoy the cookies that were brought, but there was.
Previous meeting.
Yeah, we didn't get, there were no cookies.
Uh, but there was a good celebration. Of course, as I said in the last time I did a report, we wish her all of the best on her next adventure and as well as Mr. Ian Lamp. And so those two are officially on which left two openings, and so there was some discussion around, do we fill the two openings to keep the BDC at seven? Does it move down to a board of five? What was the inclination of it? And there, in the time of some of the discussions that Chairman Kerjacki and Village President Reed had about what the potential future of that board would look like or that commission, which would require, just so the board knows, if you change it from seven to five, it would require a change in the ordinance, because that is driven by ordinance. We've had people apply that are interested to be a part of it. So the feeling, I believe, when we left, if I heard the conversation correctly, was to allow it to stay at the seven if we had people that are interested in participating, because it's always good to have diversity of opinion. So if you didn't have anybody interested, the conversation may have gone a different way, but we have people that have officially applied to be considered for it, which is great. There was also conversation around the facade program, the facade grant, and so there were kind of two different conversations that happened, well, three. One was around some of the feeling in the room about the board, the village board, being in a different place than what the BDC recommendation was, and there was a good conversation back and forth on that. There was also things pointed out that sometimes the BDC is different than the beautification, because in the facade program, beautification makes a recommendation. Then the BDC sees that recommendation and based on that makes a recommendation that is either the same as the beautification or maybe different, and in some cases it's the same, some cases it's different. Then that goes to the village board, and the village board can take the BDC's recommendation or do something different. And then this last case, the village board decided to do something different than what the recommendation was. So there was just a good conversation about that. I think there may be an opportunity for Chairman Kerjacki to come present to the village board in the future and just talk about the role of the BDC and some of the thoughts there. So that was one conversation. The other conver, the second conversation about facade was around the, the program itself and the process. And so this was based on the early application acceptance and how much of the fund that used that had been budgeted. With the idea that you don't know what's coming, but you also don't want to deny people who apply for it early. So how do you try to, how do you try to balance that? And there was conversation around, do we say every year that all applications are due by this date for consideration in the next year? So that you know everyone who's gonna apply, you can then make a judgment of how you allocate what's budgeted. Trying to be as even as possible or fund the right things, or. So there are pros and cons to that, right? There's the pro that you know what you have. The con is sometimes a building will sell or something mid-year, and how do you accommodate that person that may not have even owned a property in time to do it? And would somebody make a different business decision if they knew they were no longer eligible for a whole nother year for this type of facade program? So there was great conversation of, well, actually it should be rolling and it should be first come, first served and see how it goes. So I don't think we landed on anything, but there was conversation both ways on when we relook and the beautification committee relooks at the facade program this year, that's one of the considerations of how do we start to balance some of that? Because we do have a pretty low balance now, and we've just received two applications for consideration for facade programs. One for blocks and one for.
Rose garden.
Rose garden.
And expecting another one from the K facility.
And so that would be three. And most of our funds are already gone. So then the, the the other conversation, well, was, okay, but what happens in a year when all of the funds are spent? Is there the possibility to go back to the village board to look for additional funding for that type of program if we show that there's a need? Because there are a lot of businesses coming in with buildings that need that type of program if it's a year where there are extra funds and it may be feasible. Is that a program the board would do and what's that process look like? So really good conversations. Did I miss anything, Mr. Hedges?
No, I would just add to your last comment that I think the board will be addressing that last issue probably within the next two months.
Yeah, because there are some buildings that desperately do need the benefit of the facade program and have come forward to apply for it.
And I think, I think that we have, like, the fire has been lit outside. Like, I, I, I just want to keep that in mind, okay? I'm all about precedent setting and all that other stuff with allocating more money, but we've also never blown up downtown like we have, so keep that, keep that in mind as we talk about that conversation.
And so that may become to the board of an ask for additional budget consideration or influx of budget into that program based on applications that have been received. But as Mr. Hedges said, that'll be for a couple of months or whatever that timing looks like. Gosh, I felt like we talked about a lot that meeting. So that was a lot of the conversation. There was also business updates that Mr. Hedges gives on, on local developments and the four hundred different construction projects going on and the great work that, that he and staff are doing for the local businesses to keep them informed, to ensure that they're, they have the best possibility for continuing the business and that we're accommodating as much as possible. So there was some good conversation there. With that, Mr. Hedges, President Reed, is there anything you'd like to add that I missed or not represented?
No.
Even from memory, so I'm sure I'm missing.
I'm gonna meet with, to kind of address conversation that trustee Kelly brought up about the difference of opinions between the different levels of our government, I'll just say. Chairman Kerjacki and, and I guess Chairman Swalwell, who chairs the.
Beautification.
Beautification. We're gonna set up time to sit down and talk about some of this stuff, and that's kind of what brought up the, hey, let's look at, um, let's look at the facade program again and see if there's opportunities that we've missed or opportunities that we can to kind of clean the program up a little bit. It's been in existence for five years. It's been extremely successful, but I think that two of the, two of the conversations that have happened or three have been about patios, right? We, the Bassett Hall was patio, the backside of the.
No, Bassett Hall was internal structural components, like the trusses.
And the patio.
The patio was not funded. It was, it was part of the improvement, but it wasn't funded.
Not by us, okay, right, okay. So, and then there was the backside of the River Valley Turf Building on State, and then there was a patio at the Hampshire Social Project as well. Caused a lot of, I don't want to say dissension, but it caused a lot of in-depth conversation. Should we cover it? Should we not cover it? Does it qualify as facade, whatever? And so, and so, you know, one of these things that, as we look at stuff like that, it's come up more than once. So maybe it's time to address it in the program. Is that something that, that, you know, it, maybe we should look at that and say, okay, well, we're not paying for patios, which is not, we're gonna stick with the sides because program is extremely successful. At the beginning, we were a little more flexible with this program because we looked, there was a lot of tire kickers at the beginning. And then the one year, we only funded it at seventy-five thousand dollars because we didn't have the advocates previous year, and now we're looking at a possibility of, well, now we're looking to overfund this, you know? So as part of that, again, talking with the TIP conversation, you know, there's that clause when you get the TIP money about processing property tax. That's not currently in the facade program. Maybe that's something that should be in the facade program and stuff like that. So Phil Swalwell, Brian Kerjacki and myself and, and most likely trustee Kelly, because he's the representative of the board, will be meeting together to kind of discuss some of this. And then if there's changes that are needing to be presented, we'll bring it back to the.
Yeah, I, I will just reiterate, we talked about it earlier in the TIP presentation. The program itself, the facade program has been such an uplift to downtown, but also a help to businesses down here to attract businesses that we desperately need down here. And so just a big thank you to the board to continue to fund that. You know, I think there's always area for improvement in every program we have. Regardless of what committee it has or if it's a village board or, or anything. So also look for any recommendations. If you have your own recommendations that you'd like to be considered in those conversations, please reach out to Mr. Hedges or President Reed or myself or Chairman Kerjacki, and we'll make sure that, that they're included, or Chairman Swalwell, I shouldn't forget that, sorry. And we'll make sure that, that is included, at least in the conversation, right, before we come back and say, well, hey, actually I have something I want to. Any questions for the BDC? Let's.
Sure.
I'm good or sorry?
Just one, has there been any discussion about putting a max on? Instead of just funding what they want to do with a percentage, but just to max it so that you couldn't get any more than fifty thousand?
I mean, that can be part of the discussion. I, not in, I mean, we haven't had that meeting yet, but that's something like if, if you'd like to recommend, hey, seventy-five percent or fifty thousand, whichever is greater, right, as a max or something like that, that absolutely could be in the conversation.
Because I still like the percentage. I mean, so that they're skin in the game on both sides.
Yes.
But I mean, maybe then, I mean, personally, we can get more people help if we have a maximum that's there, so.
Especially if we don't say all applicants are required a certain time and you don't know if more are coming. I don't think we've ever had a year where we didn't spend it all.
In the early years.
In the early years.
I think the very first year, just because of the timing of getting the project.
Since my time on the board, I don't think we've had that.
No, it's been good so far.
Yeah.
But we, I, I personally am on, in worry too. I mean, we've seen it on both sides. Thank you very much. Public relations.
No report.
All right, public works. Mr. Hedges, you've had a very.
Yes, we may as well do public works here. Would you like to do the budget report first?
No.
No report, okay. I think I'll just. Pardon me?
You can't just change the agenda like that. That requires a vote of the board.
I have been greatly humbled this week and, once again. Now, this, this is, uh, this has been a very interesting week for the board. I'll keep this brief. I could give you an hour and I still didn't cover it all. Let me start with maybe the easy stuff. Public Works is still doing their regular work, which is our challenge, because we're really committed to all these projects. And so I'm just gonna run down real quick with you some updates, and I'll start with the, the big one out front here. So we're in our third week now, sixteen, and we hit our first snag on Monday. And we're working through that snag. I think we solved it today, and I think it'll be resolved by Monday. So we're probably two days behind schedule right now. I think we'll be caught up within the next two weeks. The first week was really great. We saw a lot of demos, just a lot of activity and a lot of action. Then we started laying sewer lines and water lines, and we were finding things like AT&amp;T didn't know where they're. They told us they had one four-inch conduit with a line in it. It turned out to be seven conduits with lines in them. We go three feet deeper. So there's been a lot of work in the field, myself. I've been out there pretty much all day, all week this week. Mark was off on Monday, came back to it. A real challenge on Tuesday, so Mark's been out there every day. Dave's been helping. We've had pretty much half the water, Mark has been running. We talked about the skate in, we've all approved the skate software, which by the way, implemented, so we are now safe. We still have some touch-up to do. But Mark has been running the water assist, water and sewer system from his phone while he's out here helping us with street skate. That's a great tool and it's, it's a better tool now. So I, I'm really pleased with the contractors and PEI support. We've had meetings in here three times a day. We've had meetings in here with all the contractors and PEI itself, Mark. So we're working through some challenges. We're finding valves that we didn't know existed. That are, some of them are eighty years old, really old work. One thing I will tell you, and I spoke to Mike about this earlier today. When we come to these things, there are gonna be some changes because of the things that we're finding underground. And that's to be expected in a project like this. I spoke to the owner of, President of Alliance today, the general contractor, and they do, they do street skates a lot. They've done a lot of big street skates. And I said, you know, this is, this is a pretty big mess for us. By, by the way, observers don't see what, haven't seen what you're hearing tonight. We have a lot of people in the stand outside including a lot of our own people, because it's kind of interesting to watch. But you could, you wouldn't know that we were pumping up thousands of gallons of water that were coming out of a leak in a pipe today because we had a pipe that had been abandoned, but it was really never abandoned, wasn't sealed off. So that, it was still charged and we, when we with the contractor properly with our permission, cutting into that pipe, we, we had major water break, a main break. So we were managing the tower, we were concerned about the water tower, losing water tower, losing water in the tower. But that's what that was managed. We brought in a, a quick fix and hurried to stop that. So right now we have a stopgap out here and parts are here that are about, I'd say about seventy percent installed, but they're up to six o'clock tonight. And they're still working. So I'm real pleased with where we are. I can't really give you any official update in terms of specifics, like really technical stuff, and I'm, I understand just enough with several engineers in the room just not to be able to make the right decision. But what I wanted to say is I'm erring on the side of caution and quality. Several times I've been presented today and yesterday with options, we can repair it this way, this way, that way. And I'm choosing the best way, not, not trying to cheat out. We're not talking the difference between five, five, five thousand and fifty thousand, we're talking about the difference between ten, twelve thousand. Ten, twelve or five. So in every instance, I'm taking a long-term approach. You know, this fire hydrant might have a minor leak, we're not really sure. But, you know, we can get by with it. We can repair it for two thousand dollars or we replace it, and we know it's never gonna leak again for twelve thousand dollars. And, and so I don't want to be tearing up that street in a year or even five years because we didn't make the right decision now. We will, we will have asphalt drawings from State Street that never existed before. We will know where every single valve is, where every single piece of infrastructure is. It's being well documented. We'll have that going forward, and that's a big part of it too. Today, we, I authorized about three hours of labor to just find some, a valve that we thought was there. It wasn't necessary. It wasn't something that we had. It was part of street skate. It's something that was concerning Mark and our engineers. And so we authorized three additional hours at about five hundred dollars an hour to get to that valve and find out for sure whether it worked or not. So we're making those kinds of decisions. This, this, this part of, this is the heaviest work. This is the most unknown. This will be resolved, this will all be completed by next Wednesday. And at that point, then we can, we'll start to really see some progress. We should be starting to see curves for the two weeks. And that, that'll be the next step, by the way. First curves and then sidewalks and then pavement at the last. So it's, it's starting to move along. You can't see the progress yet, but you also, people watching have not seen what we've heard tonight either. They haven't observed what's going on as well tonight. It was really pretty fascinating to watch them work. Boy, this crew that's doing the underground work, Lenny Hoffman Company, they are really good. They were brought in as a sub, and now they're, they're, they're. I went into a little more detail than I probably needed to there, but.
I've talked with, I've talked with Mr. Hedges every day this week about this project, among other things. I, I really think that we really have talked every single day this week.
More than once.
Yeah, and he, and he, and he shared with me his thought process about, you know, going with the best fix. And I told him that I didn't think that there was a single person on this board that was wanting to go with the cheap fix if it meant that we had to tear up the street again. So at the end of this, I would expect that we're gonna see a bill, okay, and he, he shared a number with me, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna double it or whatever, because that's what I do. I, I just, I'm. I'm telling you, if you guys, if you guys see a cost overrun in this process upwards for fifty grand because of this stuff, don't be surprised. I'm just, just telling you the way that it is. And I hope that it's less. But we're digging under a street that hasn't been, I mean, seen the light of day in, in over sixty years. So, you know, I mean, this stuff, this stuff happens. And so we just want to do it and do it right. And I know that Jay and, and our staff are going to take care of it. So. Just know that the bill's coming. We'll have to deal with it.
And that process, by the way, is being documented very carefully. It has to go through an approval process. We've been able to make this approval process happen in five minutes today. Where the, uh, the E E I asked for a quote for specific, what, a specific description of the project, whether it's three hours of labor or whether it's a. To add a, uh, additional, uh. Uh, valve, for example. And so they've been able to generate the quote, uh, get it back to E I, get it to me with a recommendation. I authorized the quote, it's back to E I, back to the contractor. We were able to do that today several times in less than fifteen minutes. So that's important. We, we want, we have to document it because these are contracts and they have to be properly documented. Um, and also because of the funding sources that we use. So, uh, I, I'd say everybody's doing a great job. We're just, it's been a very challenging week. It's been a lot, a lot of long days for everybody. And I, I just want you all to understand that particularly our staff in the field, our, in the upfront. We were shutting off, uh, shutting off valves and we didn't, we didn't even know which homes were going to be impacted, which businesses downtown would be impacted. Uh, they were, they were about, we didn't know we're there. And so when we did, we hit, we kept marrying the loop up front because she could get some calls for water bills. So we were basically saying, we're going to be starting this neighborhood. You're probably going to get some calls from people that might get a, um. Might have the water off. It won't be off for more than five minutes, but we just want, we want them to call and tell us that it's off. We couldn't really, we couldn't really warn them because we didn't know where they were going to go. In fact, at one point Mary had for it. And so she was fully prepared and she gave them the little talk that we're doing some testing. It should only be five, fifteen minutes. And give us a call back if you have a problem. It worked very well. No complaints at all. And at one point she gave me a list of the calls she had and I walked up, gave it to Mark and I said, does this help you at all? I said. Wow. I had no idea that the valve went that way. So, uh, we, we've learned a lot and it's, it's been a really, it's been a good experience, but I, I want you to know that. It's particularly our water and, and streets, water and sewer and streets, people out in the field. Dave and his team are doing all these Julie locates. Uh, this is that season for construction. Uh, we've got a lot of mowing going on because of the rain. So we're, we're just really busy right now and we're also short-staffed because we've lost a couple of people. So I just ask you to understand that and realize that they're really, they're really a terrific group. Um, so let me move on a little bit from Streetscape.
Can I ask you first, Jay, um, we're giving E E I almost two hundred thousand dollars to look at the entire water system. Will that help? Identify where some of these valves are going?
Um, uh, no, because first of all, I don't think that we're going to see anything else like that. State Street is just a unique, a unique entity in this town. It, it's complex. It's been, you know, patchworked multiple times over decades. So there's no part of town that's really like that. So I, I don't think they'll see anything like that. But, and, and they're not going to be like, like doing underground testing and seeing where things go. They're going to be looking at, a lot of that is about equipment and, you know. The capacity of our, of our water treatment system, capacity of our sewer treatment system. It will, it will address how we get water and sewer lines to certain areas of town in the future as we grow. So it will also address distribution. Um, but we're not really going to be looking for problems or, we know where our problems are. They're in the capital improvement plan. We know where our leaks are. We know. There are twenty, fifty leaks in the last ten years. Um, so those are things we already know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So let me dive in real quick. I think seventy-two is probably the next, most important project. Uh, I, I want you to know first of all that. I, I, there's only one business really that has complained to me. Um, and, uh, I would say that they, I, I won't, I won't go into any detail. Um, most of our businesses, all of our businesses are really being very cooperative. I, I met at this table on Tuesday with five of them. I've asked, I asked a person. A committee to come in and represent them along with, uh, um, Gene Mayer from the Chamber. And we met on Tuesday. We talked about how we can promote downtown, how, how we could, uh. Uh, create detours to direct people downtown. I'll be, I'll be a little more specific about that tonight. I didn't have time to put a chart together because I was too busy ordering the signs this afternoon. Uh, which will be here tomorrow and install them, if not tomorrow afternoon, on Monday morning. So let me just describe the feature real quick. Um. From the westbound, we'll have signs four by eight, eight foot tall, four feet wide. Uh, very nice signs printed by Signsarama. Um, and they will be, um. Westbound directing you to turn left, uh, excuse me, eastbound directing you to turn left on Prairie View Parkway. Uh, and there'll be another sign at Twilliger directing you to turn downtown to the right. So these signs say, I should pull it up. I'm sorry. It's just late. Uh, but the sign says Hampshire open for business. And then it lists, not, they didn't want to list their logos or the name of the companies. They just wanted to list the type of businesses. So. Post office, library, the, um, uh, restaurants, bars, uh, doctor's offices are open. And then when we get to Twilliger, we direct you to the right. And then there's a sign at Twilliger, uh, excuse me, at Park directing you to the left again. And these, these are smaller signs in the neighborhoods, uh, basically double a real estate sign, thirty-six by twenty-four. And, uh, so, and then we also have, it, it has been some confusion about where the parking lots are. Um, people coming from the, from the south, the parking lots are not nearly as obvious as they are coming from the north on State Street. So we're going to have several signs in those neighborhoods, also saying public parking ahead. So these were all ideas and that came from the businesses themselves. And, uh, within, in less than a week, we'll have the signs up. And so coming, and so that's from the, from the west, coming from the east, there'll be a sign, uh, just before Casey's, um, that says, uh. Uh, tip to turn right on Warner. And then Warner goes all the way to Washington. So we'll have signs at Jackson directing you left to downtown and also left of parking, which would be the, the parking on the west side and also. At the same corner, signs directing you straight for downtown and straight for parkings to post office parking lot. And so we have business, I specifically invited businesses that were located on Washington Street because that's that side of town is a different challenge. And also businesses on this side of town. So I, I feel very, very good about the fact that we've been communicating well. Um, I've been walking in businesses and talking to them. Tomorrow I'll be speaking to the Chamber, uh, luncheon at, at the Copper Barrel briefly. I met their featured speaker, but I've been asked to come and answer questions. So. We'll see how that goes. Any of you are welcome to attend, of course. Um, so, uh, that's the State Street. Um, excuse me, uh, seventy-two. Any questions about seventy-two? And let me just run, run real quickly through a couple of other. Uh, we also have the north south water system. Uh, that is really going smoothly. They, they, uh, went a hundred and ninety feet today, laid a hundred and ninety feet of pipe today alone. That's the most they've ever done. I think the first day was a hundred and thirty-five. Then it's been about a hundred and sixty feet a day. And, uh, so that project is moving along ahead of schedule at this point. Um, in addition to that, uh, I doubt we'll be starting a two-inch overlay on, uh, Route twenty from the. From, from the tollway northwest up to the McHenry County line. That won't be as much of a, of an inconvenience for our businesses. It, it'll probably. Take Route twenty down to one lane for a while on both sides. I had, I, there, there's a pre-con meeting coming up. It's the same project manager who's handling seventy-two. So we have a good relationship. Um, but one last thing I forgot to mention, I think you all got an email about this, but on the seventy-two side, chicken dip entrance is already open. They agreed to open that by Monday before the shutdown. It's already open today. So that's good. Um, so I'm up on Route twenty. I, I expect that to be a. More like the forty-seven over the lady you see going on right now, um, over in Pinry. That's what we're happening up on Route twenty. So we have four major public works projects going on right now. Um, and then on the private side, we have Stanley Storage Buildings you see being built over in Rowell. Uh, we have Freight Union. It's now moving a lot of dirt and, uh, that's project is underway. Windrush Recycling is also ready and, and moving quickly over on Barrow Road. And then, uh, the Big Timber School is on, upon schedule to be completed and opened this, this fall. So. Those are the four major projects currently under construction. And I, we have about six that we expect to be going through the process, you know, the program before the end. So I would say that we are. We are on fire right now.
And at the top of that, it's Public Works Appreciation Week. So. Uh, one thing I've, I've noticed at seventy-two in state, and I guess it'll be cleared up when it gets shut down Monday. School buses are having a real tough time turning off state on this seventy-two. Um, I don't, obviously I have heart control, but when a car comes up to the line, a bus cannot get around to get on the seventy-two. So. Maybe something on contact IDA about.
Um, we, we did actually, uh, Mike and I talked about this too. We talked, uh, you know, the last day of school, I think it was the twenty-four, is that right?
Yeah.
Or maybe twenty-third. Okay. So Monday when they start, consider maybe asking delay by one day, but I, I notified the school district. Transportation Division and they weren't concerned at all about that.
Okay.
Um, one thing I do want to mention since you brought trucks, trustee Kelly, the signs on State Street, uh, seventy-two directing you to downtown, those two of the places. Big sign that says no trucks, red circle, line through, no trucks. Uh, that's not ticketable. But the trucks are, by I D A regulations, have to follow the regulations. I'm going to check, actually to see if, because that detour. Is I D A detour, they can actually be ticketed for not using detour. So we're going to have to look into that.
Just thinking of the residents down those two streets, that truck.
You're definitely discouraging. I mean, that, now they're, they're unfortunately, in fact, I'm going to talk, well, you can't do that because I D A technically is rerouting everybody to those areas. I, I persuaded them to let us put signs in there right away in some cases, basically contradict their detour. Because it's just not, in my opinion, it just wasn't, it isn't adequate. Needs to be more, it, it needs to be more subtle and specific than that. And they were very quiet. So, but I want, we wanted to make sure that because we put detours, the first thing that Chris Chris said that I D A project managers. Trucks are going to think that's their detour, not when they see our sign. So that'd be a big concern.
They still be able to get into the wood blocks and wherever else they're going to deliver to.
Yeah, they'll just have to come from the north.
Okay.
Back on State Street.
Okay. I would ask budget, but Mr. Hedges changed my agenda. So I will have new business. Or other announcements. I'll combine them.
One announcement, uh, the twenty-sixth, the Hampshire Historic Society is going to be doing a program at the Township Building at seven P M on war history. So they've got some. Full timers from the village that are going to be coming out and discussing and sharing it, um. The one that, uh.
Uh, Fensel.
Thank you. Uh, Fensel will be one of them that'll be out there to talk about things that happened during the war in, in Hampshire. So I encourage people to come out to that. If you got anything. Get seventy-two. Sleep while we're watching.
Okay. So I have something I want to invite you all to. Uh, Metro West, which we're part of, uh, does a yearly barbecue. Uh, this year it's on June twenty-third. It's in Elburn at Lions Park Hall. I will be, uh, sending an email your way with how you can RSVP. Uh, if you guys want to go, you're more than welcome to join us. Last year Linda and I went, had a great time and. Uh, a lot of other municipalities brought all their trustees and I felt real down. So, uh. This year I'd like to extend the invitation to you guys. I've already talked with Jay. Um, just RSVP that you guys would like to go and just do me a favor and let them to know that you said yes. So that we know how many people are going. And then, uh, just, you know, drive down there. It's right in Elburn, right behind the, uh, Greens Meat Market. And, uh, it is. Right here, the invite says it's at five, five o'clock to eight o'clock. So it's just. They have a lot of legislators there, kind of tell you what's going on in Springfield and they kind of tell you what Metro West is all about and different things. And so it's, it's like, it's kind of an event that who's. Good, right? Yeah. You know, there's sort of cash bar, you know, so there's always a good show as far as that goes. So, and then, uh, yeah, so. That's what I like. And I like, Josh doesn't get a choice. Josh has to go. So. So Jay, uh, Jay says he doesn't want to go, so I'm making you go. No. No, no, I think, I don't, no, I, no, I'm, I'm kidding, but I think it'd be a good experience for you. So I think you just come with us. So anyway, uh, so an email will be coming your way. Just do me a favor. If you, if you guys do send you want to go, just let them know. So we have a headcount here. Cause you're going to RSVP right to Metro West. It'd just be nice to have them. So we know we're subject to reserve. I, that's, that's all that I have. Thanks for, oh, yes.
I have one announcement or one thing to say. Uh. I would like to give a heartfelt congratulations to all of the students crossing the platform this Saturday at Hampshire High School that are graduating. Moving on to the next chapter of their lives. Congratulations. All the best of your futures.
Hey, there's a lot of people that went pretty far there. Some of which just became mayor. So. As I said, some of them didn't go as far. They achieved for the assist. Yeah, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, hello, please.
Ms. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Both two.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson. We should pass by when you're here.